Good evening and welcome to this evening's board meeting of the Crestwood School District dated Monday, April 4th, 2022. I call this meeting to order at 7:00. Ms. Janun, please take role.
Mrs. Berry.
Here.
Mr. Baydoun.
Here.
Ms. Elzayat.
Here.
Ms. Fawaz.
Here.
Ms. Self, Ms. Kaminsky.
Here.
Mr. Seba.
Here.
And I'm Chair of the Forum.
Thank you. Fudge of allegiance, please, all rise.
By pledging allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Janun, consent agenda, please.
Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the April 4th, 2022 board agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, March 14th, 2022, and the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, March 14th, 2022.
Madam Chair. Ms. Kaminsky. I would like the agenda to be amended to allow for public discussion at the beginning of the meeting as opposed to the end of the meeting. Support. Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Kaminsky, support by Ms. Janun, that we amend the agenda meeting first. You know what, let's vote on a consent agenda first and then we'll go into...
Well, but the consent agenda includes tonight's board agenda.
Okay, but we...
She's amending it, Danielle supported it.
She supported it, okay. Elzayat? Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Kaminsky, support by Ms. Elzayat, that the agenda be amended. We will be moving public comment, is that what it is?
Yes, yep.
Public comment to the first part of the meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Ms. Janun, if you could please read our little script of our meetings. We're gonna go ahead and do public comment first, so we don't have everybody waiting.
The sheets from Kristen.
Right.
I need to read her sheets.
Yes, we need to...
Sheets.
But I thought that you had them.
Are these all of them?
Yes, I have some, there's some that's signed.
Okay, so this meeting of the board is held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. This is not the time for debate or argument. Do not mention any student or staff names. In order to permit a fair allotment of time to participants, speakers will be limited to three minutes. The president may extend this time to five minutes per person when needed. Up to a half hour is provided for public input. Direct all questions to the board president.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Our first speaker is Lila Elzain. If you could come up to the podium, please.
Hello. I am here today on behalf of the GMCA Gulfview Manor Subdivision Association. I am the president of the association. And we are all here today on your agenda. The subject, I think it's number seven, is the Field of Dreams and that going up for sale. A few of our residents in our subdivision do have a few questions to see if they could be answered about what is going to happen after the sale, if it does get voted on and go through. So that is what we're here to address today. Are you guys taking the questions on that right now? Or once you get to that on the agenda?
You can go ahead and refer the questions to Dr. Masalim. And if he can answer them, he will. Otherwise, he might need legal opinion.
Okay.
So depending on what he can answer.
Okay, perfect.
He will answer.
Thank you. One of the first questions is, a lot of the residents are concerned, first, if this property is sold, is it... What type of zoning is it? Is it residential? Is it going to be commercial? What do you guys plan on... Who's selling it to? And what is going to go there? Do you have any idea?
Currently, we have not made that determination yet because we haven't made the determination whether or not to put for sale. So I have to work with the city to see what the zoning is currently.
Okay.
And from there, have a conversation with the board, as well as the city, on what will be the accepted zoning for that area.
Okay, so today, voting on it, is it voting to be, like, sold for sure, or...
Today, the vote is whether or not the board would like to list a property for sale or not to list a property for sale.
Okay. And now, another question that we do have is if it is sold to, like, residential or commercial, would be, like, flooding sewer systems, drainage systems, things like that? Is that something that the board would be responsible for or take into consideration when selling this?
So that's where the city of Dearborn Heights will come in. If we... If the board decides to sell the property, and then an offer is made that the board is willing to accept, from there, whatever or whomever would to purchase the property, they would have to work with the city on all of the zoning compliances, as well as the ordinances to make sure that whatever they want to put will be acceptable by the city.
Okay. So I guess that would probably be... Another thing would be, our concerns are, like, exits and entrance ways because I know the Field of Dreams does have a back exit that is blocked off by a fence, which our subdivision, right now, we have 506 homes. We have around 48 to 54 that are on Clairview and Kennedy, which these homes back right up to the field. So whatever is going to be put there is literally in these people's backyards. So their concern is exit ways. If the back entrance is opened up, because it is part of the Field of Dreams for whatever's going to be put there, that is going to route the traffic through our whole neighborhood, down these two streets as well. So that is another concern. And also, another concern of the neighbors is the kids' recreation. This is a flat field for kids to play. It is used for baseball. That's what goes on there. And they're saying that there's not a lot of places in the city for the kids to go to that is in close range. So have you guys ever considered keeping it in the school board and putting, like, making it an active field? Or putting something else there for the kids to go to, to do?
So currently, the field, you're correct. It is currently used specifically by the North Dearborn Heights Baseball League, who leases the property from us for usage. It is a property that the district does currently own, but we don't have any of our own personal activities on those fields because we use our athletic complexes themselves. So in terms of the field itself, our goal is if the board decides to list the property, and if the board decides to sell the property, those funds are gonna help us repurpose and fix our current athletic facilities, which will open up more athletic opportunities for community to use because there's other baseball fields in the city, as well as next door at the Canfield, next door to Crestwood High School. The Canfield area has athletic facilities plus our own athletic facilities. So yes, you're right. North Dearborn Heights Baseball League does use that for their baseball programming. But we are willing to allow the usage of our field's resources as well for them outside of Field of Dreams if we... If the board decides to put that property up for sale. Currently, as a school district, and I want to reiterate, our... The only usage of that field for us is we basically allow North Dearborn Heights Baseball League, and we work in partnership with Dearborn Heights Recreation to use that facility at this point. And in terms of construction and building, so and so, because right now, it's just a vacant piece of land for us. You know, what... Whomever, if it is decided to move forward and to sell the property, whomever is going to purchase it and whomever the board approves to sell it to, if that is the route they choose to go, that would be something that the purchaser and the city would work together on and ensuring that all ordinances and zoning codes are being established.
I just want to comment. The decision has... The vote has not taken place yet. The vote will take place later on in this meeting. So the board has not decided on which way. The vote hasn't gone through. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that.
Yeah, and normally, I thought that the public comments were after this, so that's why it was gonna work out perfect. You guys would discuss it, and then we would talk about it before the vote. But I do have a few residents that also have some more comments and concerns that I didn't get a chance to write them down real quick. Is it okay if I let someone else speak real quick? Or would you like to wait until it's discussed?
Did they fill out a form?
No, I just put on the bottom that a GMCA residence would like to speak. Their name was not on there, no.
So if somebody would like to speak, they can fill out a form.
Yes.
And they can come up to the podium. But I'd like to make a suggestion to Dr. Masalim just because if we stop, start, and stop the timer... Like, if you're gonna answer in between... So do you want them to ask all of their questions, jot them down, then answer, and run their time? Or do you want me to... Because if we're gonna go back and forth and I have to stop the time as you answer the question. So whatever, whatever you would like.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Elzayat.
Can we give her two more minutes so that she can bring those residents up? And because of the question, question answer. If they can do it in two minutes, is that...
Oh, I don't mind giving her two minutes. I just don't have the names or anything on here. So you would...
Could they say that?
Actually, procedure is that you have... They have... You can speak for them and use up your time, but you... They can't... You can use... You can use your time, but they would have to speak for themselves or you would have to have spoken for them on that amount of time. So I will give you the two minutes. So go ahead and say what you have to say. Go ahead.
Okay, no, I... Those were, like, most of the main concerns is just the sewage, the drainage, the flooding. What I was told that before this piece of land was the Field of Dreams, I guess, years ago, it was Warren Valley School. And then it was sold to Crestwood. And when Warren Valley School was there, something else was going to be built before it was sold to the Crestwood School Board. And the complications were that the sewer systems had to... It had to be, whatever was going to be built there when it was sold, Warren Valley School was tore down, the sewer systems are... Have to go through Wayne County, and which is on the north of Hines Drive. So they couldn't do new sewer systems. So that's why it just got sold to the school board and became flat land. So there is still the issue of the sewer systems. If anything is built there, obviously, it has to be raised up a little bit, which is going to cause major flooding into our GMCA neighborhood. And it's going to be a disaster for us. But that's just something we want the board to know. Have you guys ever... Another question we have is, have you ever considered using that land for anything else for the Crestwood Schools, other than a baseball field? Or has it ever been discussed or thought about? Like, we could potentially keep it as a Crestwood School Board and put it to different use?
The only thing that we had discussed is if we ever needed to build a school, that that might be a consideration. But that's all. Is there any comments from the board on that?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Ms. Elzayat.
I just... I just wanted to make sure that everybody's clear as far as zoning, drainage, sewage, construction. All of that are plans that would have to be approved, like Dr. Masalim said, by the city. None of that takes place here at the Board of Education. The only thing that's gonna be voted on tonight is whether or not the board wants to proceed with listing the property or not listing the property.
Ms. Kaminsky, go ahead.
Two things. If anyone does want to speak, they can see Kristen and grab one of these and fill out their name. Kristen, raise your hand for me. There she is. So that's the protocol. And just to correct you, Ms. Elzayat, the school that was there was owned by the district.
Okay.
So it wasn't like the school sold that school to the district. It previously was owned. And I don't know the years.
Right.
You know, it was before I moved into the area. It's been a long time.
Okay. Well, I... That is all the questions we have. We just wanted to get our neighborhood out here because we are an association that do a lot of events and things together, and especially in our neighborhood. So we just have a lot of residents concerned about what was going to go there. And they are all in hopes that the Crestwood Board hopefully will keep it and figure out something to do with it or keep it active and not sell it and build anything there.
But Ms. Elzayat, please feel free to reach out to me with any further questions that you may have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Mr. Mike Blackburn.
Can I just ask, did everybody receive the list of questions and answers that the district... Did everybody receive this paper from the front?
The FAQ, there's an FAQ on the field of dreams.
My mind was blank.
Kristen?
We may be out, but Kristen may have some more.
I think she might be copying some as we speak because I don't see her...
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Blackburn.
Hi, this is on the Field of Dreams property. That used to be Warren Valley Elementary a long time ago. I actually went to kindergarten there. They closed it down after my kindergarten year. I'll be 52 this year, so you can do the math how long ago that was. It should stay an empty field. It should stay a field. It should be used. There's not much in the north end of the community to use. The Campfield Ball Doms that were referenced earlier, those are leased out to elite sports. So the city does not have full access to those fields because those fields are leased out. I think the school district missed an opportunity to buy the old St. Mel's property. I know it wasn't a school for a long time. It was not. Grandfather didn't know more. But your elementary schools are overloaded. They are like a busted can of biscuits right now. I mean, I went... I graduated from Crestwood. I had a couple of kids that graduated from Crestwood. Crestwood is a good school district, but your elementary schools are just overflowing. And if they build houses there, it's gonna be more kids. Where are you gonna put these kids? It's not fair to these kids to be in these classrooms like this. If any developments done on that property should be to build a new school for these children. It's not about... You know, you sell that property for a million or two or three, whatever. It's a one-time infusion. It's gone. But the long-lasting impact on the community and the kids, you just can't sell every property because back, Crestwood School District used to be two school districts. The North Dearborn Heights School District, the Crestwood School District. And in the 80s, both school districts sold off every piece of property they had to stay afloat until they had no... Nothing left and to annex together and make a school district. It probably should have happened 10 years earlier than what it did. You guys need another elementary school in that area. The kids are just suffering from it. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blackburn. Next, we have Mr. Jim Blackburn.
Thank you. My name is Jim Blackburn. I live on Kennedy Street in the Gulfview Manor Subdivision. We went through this same ordeal some 40 years ago. We had a developer approach the school board to buy the property. After long deliberations in study of the property, the developer backed out because to build the infrastructure to support a subdivision in there, he could not build enough units to make it profitable. It put the price per unit almost twice as high as what the surrounding homes were selling for. So we have to do a little bit of looking back at history and seeing what happens. If we were to take this property... The demographics of the subdivision are changing back the way they were in the 60s and 70s. We have younger families moving in with children. If we were to have a school, an elementary school on that... Built on that property, the kids could walk to school instead of having school buses. We wouldn't have to buy any more school buses. Every house in the subdivision is close enough for that to happen. We wouldn't have the traffic jams that we have around this school here in the mornings and in the afternoons. Everything in infrastructure has to go to Inkster Road. The current infrastructure in the subdivision is not large enough to support any additional pressure to it. So all this has to be taken into consideration. If the person that made the offer or whatever to buy the property, if they haven't done their engineering studies yet, it would be, I think, as a seller, our responsibility to inform the good and the bad. The property works very well for a recreation facility. As it is now, ball fields, whether we put in soccer fields. It is not conducive to more homes in the area. As my son said earlier, our schools are... Elementary schools are busting at the seams. And we want to put more homes in the area with more young families. Where are we gonna put the kids? We have 506 homes in the subdivision. We do not have a city park. We have no place for the kids to go except the Field of Dreams. I think we would do better by spending a little money developing the property into a workable recreation facility so our young people have a place to go.
Thank you, Mr. Blackburn. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can I make a comment, please? Mr. Blackburn and the community, just please rest assured, there is no... Anybody that approached, there's no one that we've discussed this with. I just want to make sure that you know that your comments are very valuable for anybody that's listening. If this does go through, if the board does decide to list it, that's something that they definitely need to think about. But I wanted to assure you that there is no deal or anything or anyone that we've spoken to about this property. So I wanted to make sure you knew that. That's all.
I was under the impression, one I heard earlier, that a developer came forward to show interest in purchasing the property.
That is absolutely not true.
No, that's not true.
Just wanted to make sure.
Okay, now we have Mr. Ali Fayas. Okay, so you're all set?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there any more? Oh, did you fill out a paper?
Yes, I did.
Okay, she's got... Did you give it to Ms. Prizzle? That's okay. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Anthony. Yes. Come on up. You're the next consent test.
I've lived in this area for probably 50 years. And we've been through this, like Jim said, about 40 years ago. My question is, why is it necessary at this moment that this property needs to be sold? Is the board in that much financial problem that we have to sell this property? And it's the only open piece of property that you own. What happens in the future if you need to build another school? Where the hell are you gonna get the property?
That's a valid question. I mean, I'm not gonna elaborate. I'm just gonna listen. Financially, no. I don't think that we're financially strapped, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, then why sell?
Well, that's...
Or why? Why even... Why is this meeting necessary? The school board should hold on to school property for the need of schools in the future. There's going to be children here. If not now, 10 years from now, where are you gonna put the school?
What I can comment is, school funding works different than private funding. Where in turn, our funding that we receive is for the daily instruction, as well as maintenance of infrastructure. We don't receive additional funding for when we have to make extensive upgrades and/or enhance our facilities to meet 21st century needs. Therefore, when we look at possibilities of expanding and/or building and/or improving our facilities, for example, you talk about the elementary schools. I can tell you that we have 18 million? Approximately between 18 to $20 million projects in place currently, without asking the taxpayers for one additional cent, to expand all three of our elementary schools to reduce the crowding. You will see us breaking ground on that this summer. In addition to that, we have an extensive need right now to establish a safe, as well as up-to-date athletic facility for all of our students, as well as physical education facilities. Within this document, it's gonna cost us anywhere between $4 and $6 million to do so. Therefore, if the board decides, again, if the board decides to list this property and then the board decides to sell the property, that money is going to be dedicated to updating and upgrading our athletics and physical education facilities to put them at, make it a much more safer facility for our students. Our athletic facilities and physical education facilities are outdated by over a decade. And they're not safe for the spectators, nor is it safe for our students. That's why we are looking at this as an option. I do want to make it clear to the community, to build a brand-new elementary school would cost $60 million. To build a brand-new high school would cost almost $100 million. In order for us to do so, that would be us coming to the taxpayers and requesting a very large bond. Therefore, we are being fiscally responsible by using federal subsidies and federal funds for the $20 million projects for our elementary schools. We will be adding five classrooms to Kenlock Elementary, two classrooms to Hillcrest Elementary, three... Sorry, three classrooms to Hillcrest Elementary, and three, four, to Highview. Penny, who's my CFO, she makes sure I got the right numbers. So we're adding almost $20 million of classrooms to our elementary schools, and we're not asking the community for one penny in additional taxes. If I may finish, please. I'm sorry.
No, what you're saying is that one school north of Warren Avenue is enough for all the residents of Dearborn Heights, north of Warren.
Currently, with our student numbers and with the expansions that we are putting on, we will be in good shape for maybe another year, two, three years. We don't know. We have to look at student population shifts. But if we're gonna build another elementary school, it is a $60 million project. And that's... And I think the community needs to understand and needs to know that these costs, how they play. As school districts, we have to ensure that our equity fund balance stays very strong. When our administration came in in 2019, we had a fund balance of 16% of our operating budget. Through cost-effective analysis and through our ability to adjust our funding and our budgets, we have increased our fund balance from 16% to 26%. If... Now, let me explain what that means. A fund balance is like your savings account. If something goes down in your home and you have to fix that, you're either gonna charge it, which we can't do. We can't put things on a credit card and pay it off over time. Or you're gonna dip into your savings account. If, for say, God forbid, something was to happen to one of our schools and it's not covered by insurance. Now, the flood that hit us over last summer, it got our insurance covered those damages. If our insurance didn't cover those damages, our fund balance would have dropped back down to 16%. Additionally, a fund balance is very important to keep strong because the economy right now, hey, things look good. But as we all know, there are dips and valleys. We, you know, peaks and valleys in the economy. School districts are the first organizations to be hit when there's a recession because according to state funding, we are funded based on sales tax. If the sales go down in the state of Michigan, the amount of money we get per pupil also goes down. I can say this. I'm a recession baby when it comes to... I know some people are depression babies. I'm a recession baby. I was an administrator for a school district where in five years straight, we had to cut close to $10 million. If we didn't have a strong fund balance, we would have saw class sizes go up to 36 per class. We would have had to cut teachers. We would have had to cut salaries. We want to keep a strong fund balance because we do fear that a recession is around the corner in the next two to three years. If that happens with a strong fund balance, I can protect the programs that we have for our children. I can protect our teacher salaries. I can protect their insurance. I can protect our teacher salaries, I can protect their insurance. This is why, as a school district, we are always looking at options on how to increase and improve our infrastructure without asking taxpayers for money first. And as a school district, we get what we get, it's a fixed amount, and that's it. You know, sometimes we get a little bit here, sometimes we get a little bit there, but we have to be very, very frugal on how we use it. And you're right, I don't disagree with anyone. Our classrooms are crowded, our schools are crowded. That's why we're putting the $20 million into our elementary schools and that's why we're going to be looking at the future and what we can do next.
My question is, that is then, you're going to make a sufficient, if you decide to sell, you're going to make a sufficient amount of money for the sale of this property to upload this fund of yours for how long?
So this would, it wouldn't be over time, so what, so first and foremost, we'd have to get the price we need. If we don't get the price we need, we don't sell the property, just like anything, you know, first and foremost, if the board decides to sell. Second, the money that we will attain, hopefully, from the sale of property, if we go forward with the sale, and if we get what we are hoping or we need to get, that money is going to be 100% earmarked to go into the facilities, to upgrade the facilities. Right now, our athletic facilities cost us about $30,000 to $35,000 a year to maintain. That's also another savings for us because we won't have to put that maintenance cost in there. So over time, we're going to be saving $30,000 to $35,000 a year in maintenance fees. So when we look at this, this would be a one-time fix and with the direction we want to go, we want to head in the same direction that schools and other districts are doing currently with the synthetic fields, with the high, the low-energy lighting, so on and so forth. This is a long, this is a short-term solution that's a long-term investment for our kids.
Well, I looked at it as saying, to rid yourself of this property on a short-term basis, or for a short-term basis solution...
Well, it would be long-term benefits. It would be long-term benefits because the facilities we would put in are, have a lifespan of 10 to 15 years and the process of maintaining it is a lot cheaper than the process of maintaining the field we currently have.
What does it cost you to maintain that field?
35, $30,000 to $35,000 a year.
30?
And it's not even where it needs to be.
What do you do there?
Oh, that's a laundry list.
You mow the lawn?
No, there's a lot more than mowing the lawn, a lot more.
I don't see it.
Okay.
Chair?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, no more yet, no more. Next, we have Mr. or Ms. Kelly Tamboro.
Hi.
Hi. Kelly Tamboro.
I'm sorry.
I'm also a resident of Golf U Manor. I'm asking if the school board denied the sale, hold it off? I don't have the best memory. I don't remember the school board asking for any funds to make upgrades to whatever maintenance to the buildings that need to be made. Maybe we should try that first, maybe start with one area first instead of hitting people with a big number. I'll be the one to say, I don't trust the city. I believe that you are washing your hands and saying, well, it's up to the building and permit. I don't know if anybody was part of the group that was opposed to a car wash going on Ford Road and the city denied it being built. It went to court, the court said we had the right to deny it. What's going there?
Car wash.
Thank you. I don't want homes in there. I like that, that it's a field. It floods all the time, it takes the water. What's going to happen? Is it really going to be built properly, really? I think of Dearborn, my mother-in-law lives in the area, that's flooded now twice, and she keeps saying, well, why did that happen? Why did that happen? And I'm like, 20 years ago, Target wasn't there, Walmart wasn't there, all that green space is gone. Why, try something else. I'm just asking, please shoot this down for now, try something else. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Zohair Abdalhak.
Good evening, everyone, and happy Ramadan to everybody.
Same to you.
I have a question here. Was the bond of 2015 money used for the current outdoor facilities at Crestwood High School? I believe I was the chairman of the commission or the group who passed the bond of 35 million and there was, to my knowledge, one and a half million dollars allocated to that field. Was that money spent in that field or it was spent someplace else?
That was before Dr. Musallah's time. What happened is there were some change orders and that was actually before my time, but I know some of the questions that were asked, there were some change orders that had to be made without some board members' knowledge. I know, Salwa, you and I...
We came after all of that was already done.
Yeah, so I know that some of that money was...
I know, I'm not going to blame anybody.
Okay.
For, but that makes me, do I trust, again, something like this to happen?
Go ahead, Ms. Musi.
Please.
So, Mr. Abdalhak, that was when I was still on the board, early on, and that money initially was appropriated towards the field, I believe it was 1.4 million. That money, there were change orders put in that the board, for lack of, for lack of anything, we were not made aware of, the change orders were approved without board approval by the previous business administrator and it went into critical needs for the buildings, which was roofs, furnaces.
I just want, thank you for the explanation.
No problem.
Again, I don't blame you and I understand exactly what went behind closed doors.
I know you do.
And I know the people who are responsible, they walked away and one of them got $10,000 bonus too when she left. Okay?
Actually, that did not happen, I'll be honest with you.
Yeah, that did not happen.
We made sure that didn't happen, but go ahead.
Okay. I hope I am wrong.
No, we didn't.
But my information that she was given...
I assure you, it did not happen.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. That makes me feel better.
The plus side is everyone that was involved in that is gone.
Oh, I agree with you. You know, I do trust you guys because that's why I haven't been here for almost a year and a half because I trust you, you will make the right decision. Otherwise, I will nag at you every single day.
I would love if everybody that's here came every week, I would love it.
Okay. Mr. Musallah, what is the required money we're supposed to keep by the state in our budget?
Okay, so there's, first and foremost, in order for a school district not to be taken over, you have to have an equity fund balance of over 6%.
Okay.
In order for you to be approved by your auditors, you have to have a fund balance between 16 and 18%.
Okay.
In order for you to maintain the standing we are at right now and to be in a very safe, comfortable environment where if there is a recession, or God forbid, something was to happen, you should be at 20% plus. Therefore, we will be dipping into that fund balance if need be, but it is my recommendation to the board, and I will say it publicly, that we cannot allow our fund balance to dip below 20%. A 20% fund balance protects our teachers, it protects salaries, it protects programs, and it protects, look, let's be honest, we just, our teachers, this administration and this board gave our teachers a raise in the last contract because they were making so much less compared to other places. And it's still nowhere near what they deserve. Because again, we're at a fixed set of funding. And I say this empathetically because I was a teacher once before. And I started teaching, there are, I started teaching in 1998. There are teachers that make $10,000 more than what I started at in 1998. And I think we all know, gas prices and a gallon of milk do not cost the same as it did in 1998. School districts are on such a tight and fixed budget that we do everything in our power to make sure we protect that as well as children's programs. I, and I go into detail on that because a lot of times, people don't understand how school funding works and how stringent it is.
I do understand what you're saying, but this is the last piece of property you have. And I understand there is a crowd, you know, crowdedness in the schools, especially in middle schools and elementary schools. But I would hate to see this property goes to developers and to put, and I know exactly before anybody knows that there will be condos putting in that property if it goes today and you vote on it. And I can assure you, that's what's going to happen. And I am here tonight, really, asking how much money left from the bond of the 2015? Is there anything left?
We have cleaned up the entire bond and we are closing out the bond. Our last bid that went out for the bond is updating all our fire systems. And we were able to do so because of the process when we came in as the board and administration to clean it up. So the bond money has been all exhausted.
Okay. I will ask this board to explore all your options before you sell this property. There is no rush whatsoever. The year, school year, it's almost over. You can wait. Your priority is to have children, less than 20 students per class. Look at your priority, what you're going to teach my children, and I have two of them still in Crestwood District, and I encourage you, please, vote no on this sale because you will regret it as we regret it now and we are struggling to find the place to buy or to lease from the city or from other places to put our students. So my advice to you, please vote no on it and explore all your options before you make any decision. And have a good night.
Thank you.
I want to trip there. My name's Anthony Rosello. I'm a resident of the city of Dearborn Heights for 68 years and I go back 10 years prior to that with Dearborn Township. I lived and grew up in the South End. I know what it's like to have a flooded basement. It's not a lot of fun and it didn't happen only once in our household. I feel if you people proceed to put this up for bid and vote favorably for it and in fact, sell the property, as you here heard from our president tonight, you folks, all seven of you board members who are elected representatives, are endangering the welfare and the safety of the residents of the subdivision. And what I mean welfare, flooded basements. You heard that 40 years ago, they tried to build a subdivision here. It didn't happen because of sewage problems. Look at the weather conditions that we've had in the last few years. Look how many once in 100 years storms we've had. Three, so we should be 300 years down the road? We're not. Just today, on the weather, they announced that April's going to have an exceptional heavy rainfall for the month of April. What about May, June, July, August? I'm not going to ask for you to put your hands up, but how many of you had a flooded basement?
I have.
Yes, is it fun?
No.
It's a lot of work and a lot of inconvenience and every time it rains, you start praying and hoping you don't flood. It's not fun. And you folks, if you move forward on this, are endangering these people this way. Safety. We don't need any more cars in our subdivision. Take a look, Ford Road, Gully, Beach Daily, even in our subdivision. I don't know what they're teaching these newer drivers, but they sure as hell ain't following the rules of the road. We got enough cars racing in our subdivision today. You heard our president say, hey, you got the thing on Kennedy or Ramboi? If you open that up, that's more increased traffic and more increased idiots on the roadway. You're endangering the welfare and the safety of these residents. And I'm not making a threat, but in the time and days we live in, I'm not a lawyer. But based on what was said here tonight, and you seven knowing about it, if you proceed to put this property up for sale and in fact, it does sell, and one single basement floods in our subdivision, I'm sure you're all going to be facing legal action. There's no doubt about it, you will be taken to court for not doing your duty based on you knowing the conditions and the problems that these people could face. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, next we have John Oblak.
Hi, John Oblak, I live in the same sub that everybody's talking about. I'm probably going to say something that's quite obvious, but I feel I have to at least remind you of this. You guys come to us for millage increases or bonds, they get passed. We're just asking you to think outside the box here and if that's the case, we're one of the biggest associations around, we're definitely the biggest in the city and we have a lot of political pull. I don't think this would be good for people's political careers, asking for support, and I don't think you could count on our subdivision for any more millage increases or bond issues. But that's all I want to say.
Thank you. Mr. Vince Darprowski? Darprowski, you said that right.
Hi, Vince Darprowski, Columbia Street. First of all, I'd like to see more of you residents at the city council meetings because that's where your problems are going to get solved. They can't do any, the school board can't do anything about the city issues, you have to go directly to the city. Second, I'd like to see the school board get together with the city and consider negotiating the purchase of Canfield Center. It's a building that's pretty much obsolete, outdated, and especially if the city has any plans to increase the size of the golf center at Warren Valley, they sure as should consider moving the recreation department to the new golf center and consolidate the recreation department and the golf course as one entity. That gives you several acres to do whatever you need to do there. Even add onto the school, maybe some parking lots, instead of all the students parking in the circle there. So give that a toss. And I think it's actually negotiable where you could actually get it done. I brought this up to a couple of council people and I brought it up to a couple of people in the city. And that's all I can do. The rest is up to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Steve Sacala.
Yeah, hi, my name is Steve Sacala. I've been in the city for 55 years. I too went to Warren Valley for kindergarten, so I got a couple of years on the Blackburns over there, but, so, I have lived in the area in Golf U Manor my entire life and that field's been there. I've lived through all its problems, all the flooding that's been there, the poor lack of mowing, lack of maintenance, and it's, you know, it's been pretty good the last 10, 15 years. I just want to say, I agree with everything everybody has said. You have a chance to hold on to this property. It is an asset. I heard all the budget stuff you guys are throwing around. Once you sell this, it's gone. It's a one-time fix, it's a Band-Aid. You have an asset, you should hang on to it. You have an asset that the whole community, this is the tip of the iceberg to me, my mom lives in the area, my sister lives in the area, my brother lives in the area, they're all opposed to this. You have a chance to hang on to it. If you sell it, it's gone. It's a temporary fix. Your budget issues will still be there two or three years from now and you'll be... Because I've been knee-deep, thigh-deep, hip-deep in water on my street. Why? It wasn't like that when I moved into this city 23 years ago. It's the last dozen years. So at 2:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the afternoon, I would like to invite you to come out and help me clean the drains because the sewer is backing up all the way down Kennedy. And then when fools drive down the street at 40 miles an hour and that rake pushes water all the way to my porch, I have a problem with it. So why is that? We flow, the water flows down river. So guess what? If that field gets developed, there's more water in the sewer system, guess what? The problem is going to be exacerbated. So the only thing I'd like to bring to your attention is please be considerate of, I know you have a business to run, a school, but you are in the community, so business decisions do affect the community. So if you'd like to come by, bring your rake and a flashlight so you can flag the cars down and say, please don't come down the street because you'll drown me and, and the water will go up to my neighbors' porches. Feel free to stop by. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Diana Merdina?
Also, I have a personal comment to make. I live on Clairview, which backs up to the field. We also know what it's like to flood. There's times we had to raise our, we had to put rocks all the way up, raise all our levels. We kept adding sod, sod, sod to the back so we didn't flood. Our neighbors do flood. It keeps coming back every time the water does. Kennedy's side is a nightmare. The gentleman before us, we know is right. And it gets worse every year, every flood. Our basements, we constantly get water down it. The sewers get water. The mosquitoes, we don't even talk to that. I wrote to Mayor Bazey. I wrote to our sub-president. The mosquitoes are horrendous. So, and the reason that is, is because of the water and the standing water. So yes, the field of dreams should stand. We don't believe that it should be sold. We want it to stay as is. We don't believe. You talk about that you're giving 15 to 20 million for the schools to add to them. I have a question. When you're building on, are you building, what kind of schools are you adding on? What are you kind of, um, things are you adding? Are you adding actual trailers or are you actually adding buildings for the elementaries? And then if you've spent $20 million to add classrooms, that $20 million, if you needed $60 million to be building an elementary, wouldn't it have been better to build six, use $60 million and have had to go get an elementary? Because one of the parents, I'm, I'm actually representing my two neighbors also because of the Ramadan, they could not be here tonight. But one of their biggest concern is fifth graders not being mature enough to attend Riverside Elementary and they put in to, fifth grader should be separate. And the elementary schools are being so overcrowded. So wouldn't it have made sense to go get a $40 million millage passed so that, and build an elementary school behind us instead of selling that? And you're selling it for a few million dollars. So where, and that's all you're going to get. One of those homes that high dollars, so the, one of the topics that people are saying you're going to build high dollar homes behind us. Okay, great. One of those high dollar homes in Dearborn Heights are selling for like $10 million. Okay, great. Our homes are selling for between $200,000 and $300,000. So we're being told, oh, it will bring up the size of, price of your home. Other realtors are saying, oh no, sell, that'll bring the price of your home down immediately. We're not sure what to think.
I'm sorry, your, your time, your time is up, if you don't mind. Did you want to respond, Dr. Mosella?
Yeah, I'd like you to respond to at least the why you would choose not to build an additional elementary.
So the monies we use for the $20 million are earmarked by the federal government to expand current schools. You cannot build a new school with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for responding to that.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd like you to please to vote no and to understand the people that live behind why we would like you to vote no. If you live there and flood, and if you live there, you'd understand why you don't want it.
Thank you. I'm sorry?
I have one question to the board, ma'am. You have one question?
You can put in a, a, a form.
Then give me one.
She can give you one. We'll let you ask the question if you've put, put it on the form. Thank you. Okay, is it Jose?
Yes.
If you can just tell me your last name, not Gonzalez?
Jose Gonzalez.
Gonzalez, okay.
Just a simple question. How many of you guys been into the subdivision?
Yes.
You been to the subdivision?
I have.
Do you know what it's like? When was the last time that you were there, sir?
What, what's your?
My question is, have you been to the subdivision?
Yes, sir.
Simple as that is, plain and simple.
My, my son has friends who live in the subdivision, yes.
When was the last time that you were there?
Probably a month or two ago.
No, it's too much of a different month. A two or go can be roughly months.
Within the last two months, sir.
Okay.
I, I, was there a point to the question?
My, my point is, I want you, any of you guys, please, I mean, I just moved in here from California. I fired for four years the radium, the, the new stadium. It really broke my heart, come to the same thing that I run into it. And see, to be, I got four kids, oldest one 12, youngest one four. What am I going to do with the childrens? I mean, if it's something to be right there, I chopped around for a few months and it was a safe, quiet neighborhood that I can find and hold area. Yes, we, my kid had to chair some stuff with the childrens because we overcrowded in the schools. I mean, I think it's a good idea, like I say, if you, you sell the property, by the time the buyer knows what's going to happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Um, I guess I'm going to recommend that we move to that, um, item, Dr. Mosella?
Madam Chair? Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Seba.
I recommend we table the, uh, the vote for further discussion, um, in closed session for next meeting.
I support that. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Instead of the vote, do we have to, um, I just want to make sure that we're doing this right. Um, instead of voting on it, can we amend it to table it?
No, that is the resolution. You have to have a vote for the resolution to table it. So instead of voting your name on it, you're voting to table it. And then you'd have to get a majority vote to table it.
That was my recommendation.
Yes.
Okay.
The recommended action is to table item, whatever.
Okay.
Does that mean vote in closed session on the same item?
You can't, you can't vote in closed session. No, just to further discuss it.
Just the tabling of the discussion.
Okay, so we're not going to vote on it tonight. So we have a motion for Mr. Seba to table the vote, um, for further discussion at a later meeting.
Yes.
Okay, any supporters?
Support.
Ms. Fawaz? Okay, um, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Can we discuss?
Sure.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Before, before we, okay, I apologize, before we, I guess, table that, go ahead. We will, uh, have a discussion. Ms. Kaminsky?
Okay, um, so as many of you know, not everybody, because there's a lot of new faces, I live in Golf U Manor. And so I am very aware of the problems. I also have a school board hit and I am aware of our football and sports fields and soccer fields. I want all of my neighbors to consider that the problems that you're having, that we are having with the flooding are not school board issues, they are city issues. And trust me, I'm out there at 2:00 in the morning and I am raking the corner of Amboy and Little Kennedy, the same as all of you are, um, and we do have a problem. However, I want you all to think from a school board stance, that property is sitting there. It is not the school board's problem that that property floods. Now, my feeling on how I'm going to vote is totally separate and, and my mind may change on this, but I want you to be aware, while I appreciate all of you here, and I did not ask not one of you to be here, um, nor did I talk to any of you, I want you to know that the place you need to be for the concerns you're expressing are at the city council meetings. And trust me, I understand and I support and I empathize and I'm happy to see you, but the problems you have are not school board related.
It starts here.
Well, it, it starts with, with the city and the drainage issues. It does not start with what that land is or what it may be in the future.
Hold on, I'm sorry, we gotta, we, hold on.
So I'm not, I'm not asking for comments, I'm just trying to.
From the audience, please.
I'm just trying to let you know and to think about the issues that you're having, with all due respect.
Thank you, Ms. Kaminsky. Ms. Janun, go ahead.
Um, you know, this might go back to our further discussing, but I'm just, my question is, is are we, are we planning on moving forward with our athletic field regardless of whether or not we sell the land?
We need to.
And the reason, well, the reason I ask that question is, is if, when were we planning on beginning that project? Because if we begin that project, if we're looking to do that over the summer, if this land does not sell, are we then putting ourselves in a, in a position, or, this is why I'm asking. Are we selling it first before we start the project? I mean, do we, do we have that timeline down or, or were we just looking to sell the land and then begin the project?
We don't have a lot of time.
That is up to the board.
That money was earmarked for the project. This field doesn't get sold, there's no project for the field.
So.
Was that your question?
That's my question.
That's what he had mentioned before, yeah.
Well, but then again, there's no guarantee that that's going, that it's even going to sell or that they're going to run, they could potentially, the developer run into that.
You're absolutely correct. Absolutely correct. You don't get the price you want, you don't sell.
And if the developer can no longer, whoever it is that purchases it, cannot develop on that land, then we don't sell. Because I'm assuming that they're going to make it, nobody's going to buy that land without going through that whole process to know whether or not they can develop that land. Your, your, that sale would be contingent on whether or not they could develop that land.
Well, either way, I mean, we both.
Hold on, hold on. We have Mr. Seba? Go ahead, Mr. Seba.
First of all, thank you all for coming out tonight. I, um, I hear all of you loud and clear. I, I do want to reiterate what Ms. Kaminsky said, and I know that some of you feel differently, but honestly, this, this city of Dearborn Heights has more of a say with the sewage than we do. And I know that your point is this field belongs to the school district, which is really the citizens, and if we sell it, then we harm you. If we were private owners of that land, we wouldn't be having this discussion, but we're not private owners, we're public owners. We are, we represent the citizens, most importantly, the students of this community. I find it very hard to look at the number of children that have blown out their knees and torn their Achilles and had other injuries on these fields that we have, and we can't do anything about it. And I know some of you have said, just go out for a bond and you'll vote for it if we don't do this. That's not the way it works, I'm sorry. This is the consensus of the entire school district. For us to go out and ask for a bond, if we're going to do that, we need to make sure we're not putting Band-Aids on the school district, that we're fixing the school district. And that in itself, it'll be over a hundred million dollar bond. With the things that need to be done, that 35 million that was done in 2015 was a Band-Aid that was mishandled. I hate to say it, I wasn't here, I can't speak for it, all I can do is comment after the fact, like that Sunday, you know, that Sunday, that armchair quarterback, it means nothing. At the end of the day, I understand what you're saying, but you need to understand that we have a responsibility to our students also. We have a responsibility to answer to the citizens of this community, but these children are the, they're our main responsibility, as they are yours. And I'm not telling you I want your basement to flood and I'm not telling you I want you to be out on the street raking your leaves out of the sewage at 2:00 in the morning. Please don't misunderstand me. But you also have to understand that we have a job to look at all aspects, okay? We understand there's 560 homes, we understand there's families that are involved. Mr. Gonzalez, I understand you have four children. I know you're coming from one situation to another and it bothers you. But you also have to understand that we have a job to do, which is make sure that our facilities are safe for our children when they participate in athletics, okay? We have almost 4,000 students and when they're using our facilities, we need to make sure they're safe. Not one person in this room can question that statement. Nobody will stand up and say, I don't care if these children are safe or not, because it would not be true. I understand, and that would be a bond and that would entail the entire school district. That's what we're trying to say to you, sir. We, we don't mind putting out a bond, but I can assure you, after that last debacle with the last bond, you're going to have a lot of people like Mr. Abdalhat that don't trust, okay? They just don't trust and they have a right not to trust, okay? But, I, I, I understand, I understand, but that's a personal, that's.
Hold on a second.
That's a personal feeling.
I'm going to have to disagree with some of the things that are being said.
Yeah, me too.
I'm going to have to disagree with some of the things.
With what I said?
Some of the, yes.
Please.
The, the, the bond was not completely mishandled. There were some mis, misleads by the previous administration, okay? That we were not made aware of. They did things without the board knowing. That I have to, and there was things that were done. We did get the new roofs. We did get the new classrooms in the, at the high school. We did get the new, um, uh, heating and cooling systems.
I didn't blame anybody. I was talking about, well, a million and a half dollars that was appropriated for a field that we had to.
That was the first bond that was passed.
I get it.
Since 1969, since the buildings were closed, opened.
I'm, I'm addressing a statement that was made earlier about the bonds, right?
I just, I just don't want.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not, I never once blamed anybody in this room. I'm simply stating, stating that, yes, we want a bond. Yes, I wish we could go for a bond and not have to have this discussion. Because honestly, that would be, that would be ideal, but I can tell you, having cased the community and discussed this with many members of the community, that would be a tough sell right now. It would be a tough sell. And I, you know, I can't tell you how many times I've walked out there and watched kids in knee braces because they tore their ACLs on those fields. It's just not fair.
Thank you.
So I understand, thank you. Are you saying you're going to get $35 million for that property?
Hold on, Ms. Elsaya, hold on, hold on. Ms. Elsaya, go ahead.
That's not what I mean.
Order, please, let's keep order. Go ahead, Ms. Elsaya.
Oh, no, I was just trying to.
Are you all set?
Yeah.
Okay. So are we going to go with your?
Yes, I think we did, but I wanted to make a statement because some things were said that I just wanted to.
No, no, that's fine. I just want, I would.
We had public comment.
Are we going to table it? And I'm not telling you I want your basement to flood, and I'm not telling you I want you to be out on the street raking your leaves out of the sewage at two in the morning. Please don't misunderstand me. But you also have to understand that we have a job to look at all aspects, okay? We understand there's five hundred sixty homes, we understand there's families that are involved. Mr. Gonzalez, I understand you have four children. I know you're coming from one situation to another and it bothers you. But you also have to understand that we have a job to do, which is make sure that our facilities are safe for our children when they participate in athletics, okay? We have almost four thousand students and when they're using our facilities, we need to make sure they're safe. Not one person in this room can question that statement. Nobody will stand up and say, I don't care if these children are safe or not, because it would not be true.
We're just asking you to find a different way.
I understand, and that would be a bond, and that would entail the entire school district. That's what we're trying to say to you, sir. We, we don't mind putting out a bond, but I can assure you, after that last debacle with the last bond, you're going to have a lot of people like Mr. Abdallah that don't trust, okay? They just don't trust. And they have a right not to trust, okay? I, I, I understand, I understand, but that's a personal, that's-
Hold on a second.
That's a personal feeling.
I'm going to have to disagree with some of the things that are being said.
Yeah, me too.
I'm going to have to disagree with some of the things. Some of the, yes.
Please.
The, the, the bond was not completely mishandled.
Correct.
There were some mis, misleads by the previous administration, okay? That we were not made aware of. They did things without the board knowing. That I have to, and there was things that were done. We did get the new roofs, we did get the new classrooms in the, at the high school, we did get the new, um, uh, heating and cooling systems.
I didn't blame anybody. I was talking about, well, a million and a half dollars that was appropriated for a field that we had to-
That was the first bond that was passed since nineteen sixty-nine, since the buildings were closed, opened.
I'm, I'm addressing a statement that was made earlier about the bonds, right?
I just, I just don't want like-
No, no, I'm not, I'm not, I never once blamed anybody in this room. I'm simply stating, stating that, yes, we want a bond. Yes, I wish we could go for a bond and not have to have this discussion. Because honestly, that would be, that would be ideal, but I can tell you, having cased the community and discussed this with many members of the community, that would be a tough sell right now. It would be a tough sell. And I, you know, I can't tell you how many times I've walked out there and watched kids in knee braces because they tore their ACLs on those fields. It's just not fair.
Thank you.
So I understand, thank you.
Thank you.
Are you saying you're going to get thirty-five million dollars for that property?
Hold on, Mr. Sable, hold on, hold on. Ms. Elzaya, go ahead. Order, please, let's keep order. Go ahead, Ms. Elzaya.
Oh, no, I was just trying to-
Are you all set?
Yeah.
Okay. So, are we going to go with your-
Yes, I think we did, but I wanted to make a statement because some things were said that I just wanted to-
No, no, that's fine, I just want to-
Because we had public comment.
Are we going to table it, because you-
Yes, that is my recommendation, is we table the vote.
Okay.
And we have-
So we have a recommendation from Mr. Sable that, um, we table, uh, for further discussion. Uh, support by Ms. Fawaz. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so it will be tabled. For further discussion. I'm sorry?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we continue with our-
Yes, we're going to move it on to business report. Ms., uh, Morgan?
Board brighteners.
Board brighteners, I apologize.
Oh, yeah, we need a board brightener. Bring them on.
Oh, who's our board brightener?
All right, Mr. Mayor BS?
Is he here?
Mr. Paul.
Mr. Paul. Mr. Paul, sorry. I just got an email from Mr. Mayor BS, I said his name.
Mr. Paul.
Mr. Paul, come on up.
Come brighten this board.
I'm sorry, Brian.
Hi, I'm Mr. Mayor BS, nice to meet you all.
My apologies, I'm, I'm pulling up the agenda and then Pete sent me an email, so his name was brought in center. My apologies, Mr. Paul.
No worries, no worries, it's all good. Hello, everyone, how are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. Greetings, my name is Brian Paul and I'm a third grade teacher at Highview. I come to you this evening with deep appreciation for I've had the good fortune of my name being spoken favorably on occasion at these board meetings.
I apologize. If you could just hold on one second.
Absolutely.
Excuse me. Yeah, I, I'm not hearing anything you're saying, I apologize.
The noise from the-
But a lot of it wasn't here. Okay, I apologize. Mr. Mayor BS, can you start over?
You know, I work with his wife, Susan, it's going to be hysterical tomorrow.
I'll buy you lunch next month.
You better hold him to that, but go ahead, I apologize.
But you can buy a dinner today.
No worries. I'll go ahead and get right to it, out of respect for everyone's time. I come to you this evening, as I mentioned just a moment ago, it's with deep appreciation, because I've had the honor of my name being spoken favorably a couple times at these board meetings. Well, tonight, I'd like to recognize and amplify some other names. It's altogether fitting and proper and right to mention these names during a board brightener, where these educators' passion to their students shines so brilliantly. So please allow me to set the stage so I can properly honor these educators' names. On April first, two thousand twenty-one, the Michigan Department of Education notified me that I was selected as one of Michigan's Regional Teachers of the Year for two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. Thank you.
Nice.
On, on April second, two thousand twenty-one, Dr. Masalum notified Crestwood employees of this fact. On April third, I replied to his email to him. I'd like to read that to you. Dear Dr. Masalum, Yesterday I was enjoying a quiet morning, sipping on a cup of coffee until you sent out that email. All kidding aside, I was overwhelmed yesterday and still am with your very kind words in complimentary letter where you mentioned not just me, but many others being a part of this. That is so true. I need for you to know that there are many teachers far more deserving of this recognition than me. I am very honored, but as a PSYOP coach, I've had the privilege of witnessing so many fellow teachers tirelessly conducting exemplary teaching. I've also seen such great collaboration among teachers that spans across multiple buildings. I did not arrive here on my own merit. There are so many wonderful people who have positively impacted me. My wonderful mentor, Michelle Montgomery. She signed up to guide me for three years, but it's been over ten, poor girl. My wonderful kindergarten teammates, Carolyn Hassan and dance party Kristen Rambold. Oh, how lucky a teacher is to call Carolyn Hassan a partner. Additionally, the guiding hand of Mary Laney, who provided me guidance as a neophyte teacher. The incredible fourth grade team that I was fortunate enough to join with Mary Ann Welch and Lauren Sutton. Mary Ann is a legend in the community and Lauren is one of the most organized and most helpful teachers I have ever met. Our team was then joined by my dear friend Marissa McNulty, who is so dedicated to making her students learn and is always a positive force to all whom she meets. Wendy Ellis, my current fourth grade partner and neighbor, who is always there to listen and provide kind words to keep our spirits going through the challenges of each day. My new partner, Anna Chapman, who so impressively and seamlessly made the great leap from being a kindergarten teacher to a fourth grade teacher. I have also been privileged to witness and have admired from afar the boundless energy and enthusiasm of Cassie Hammerly, the passion of Sophia Gophers, the organization of Kristy Kileman and Megan Giant, the tremendous caring of her students from Tara Spencer, the wonderful spirit which guides Sarah Marisco in all that she does, the creativity of Sarah Foster, the solutions-oriented focus of Jessica Hilling, the dedication to her students in helping hand of Susan Mayor BS, and all that she does in supporting teachers as well. The endless joy in all they do of Karen Joma and Christina Benura, the happiness always displayed by, uh, Lori Distefsky, and the cross-building resourcefulness of Deanne Volko, Diana Yazencheck, Peggy Janjaski, and Huda Harajli. The guidance, organization, and being there when I needed to help problems solve of my principal for the past ten years, Alice Rinkie. Lastly, my dear students, it's an absolute joy to be their teacher. They have challenged me, pushed me to try and deliver the best I have to offer. I am sad when I fail them. But I am overjoyed to see their eyes light up when they swell with pride with something new they have learned or a new skill that they have mastered. Each day when they look up at us with their hopeful eyes, it energizes all of us. I know there's countless others that I have not mentioned who have helped me along the way. What I'm trying to impart to you, Dr. Masalum, is the recognition from the state of Michigan belongs more so to all these wonderful teachers because they have and continue to shape the teacher I am. It is the community of teachers that is the strength, not just one individual. I continue to learn from them. It is their dedication to our wonderful Crestwood students that continuously inspires me to try and do a better job. It is to all of them that I am indebted. May God continue to bless our wonderful Crestwood students, their families, and everyone else in our tremendous community of learners. Kind regards, Brian Paul. So that concludes the email. Finally, allow me to recognize my new principal, Linda Talib's unending support. Here's just a brief example of her support. One day, I asked her a question in the student lunchroom. Might add, she helps to monitor that room as well clean the tables and throw the trash out. Well, after asking her this question, I returned to my classroom with my students and five minutes later, I already had the answer in my inbox. I wondered what took her so long, I mean, five minutes? That's just one small example of her prompt and steadfast support to her students and staff. It is still a mystery to me why this recognition has befallen me. It is not a mystery to me of the people who have positively impacted me along the way. Now, august board members, their names are no longer a mystery to you. I hope I have properly highlighted their honor and illuminated some of their deeds. So I close now by asking this question. Not with hubris, but humility. The answer which could perhaps, perhaps refine our ethos. Who are we? We're Crestwood United. And Crestwood United means we are a thriving community. We're all bus drivers, custodians, food service personnel, paraprofessionals, secretaries, administrators, parents, and teachers, together, continuously support each other as we charge forward into the vibrant sunrise of our students' future by pushing, propelling, and persevering ourselves to this attainable goal. We shall provide all of our beloved Crestwood students with a world-class, twenty-first century education. I graciously thank you for the time you've given.
That was-
Thank you, Mr. President.
That was very, very, very thoughtful and very well put together. Thank you so much.
Brian, eh, yes, thank you, and what I can say, I know the board has been seeing the school improvement plans and the different things happening. This is Crestwood. Take away all the other stuff we're dealing with, this is Crestwood, and I, I am truly thankful that we have people, not just educators, but people like you who really do push to the next level. And one of the reasons why, you know, Brian is, is, is one of our best teachers is because Brian, even in conversations with me, is like, okay, what do we got to do next? What's the next step? You know, where are we, you know, it's not, let's just look at where we were, no, where, where are we going to go? So I, I appreciate you, and I appreciate all that you do.
Me too.
We want more of you, Mr. Mayor BS.
You know, I'm not going to lift that down now, you know, right?
But Dr. Masalum, if I may, when you say this is Crestwood, I'd just like to say, this is Crestwood United.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, my friend. Have a great evening.
Boy, he just made everything better.
Right? It reminds, it reminds you why we do what we do. Well, trust me, I, you know, the next time I'm having a bad morning, I'm going to his classroom.
Can I have your number?
Uh, next up is Mr. Fabris. Mr. Fabris, um, he's going to briefly go through, we, we had a longer presentation, but we shortened it up, just to give you an update on Reader's Apprenticeship. This is another framework of literacy instruction that we are using in our middle school and our high school. This was a pilot year. Um, we are going to, our district most likely is going to be selected for a research project and they're going to publish the work we're doing in our district nationally. I have a meeting with them in May to discuss next steps. So I want to turn it over to Mr. Fabris.
Thank you, everybody. Um, I just want to say, um, thank you to Mr. Paul, that's, um, that was very touching and it's a hundred percent true, and I know, um, I just want to piggyback off that to say that our district has been so great because of the teachers. And now, and part of what I'm going to lead into this presentation about is we're, we are becoming united. Finally, to have systems in place, to have everybody on the same page, to be doing things that are best for our kids. And, and that's not to knock anybody else that were, were in your seats, but it is to recognize that our teachers are fantastic and they need the support to make our students better. It's just the way it is. So, thank you.
Thank you.
In terms of Reader's Apprenticeship-
This is too touching. Go ahead.
In terms of Reader's Apprenticeship, um, you know, eh, I'll get into the, to the nuts and bolts about it, but I know when Dr. Masalum came aboard, one of the first things he talked about was literacy at the secondary level. There, there's very little literacy, uh, at least I didn't experience much literacy support at the secondary level, it all happens at the elementary level. And when, when students get to that secondary level and they still don't know how to read, what happens? They just keep getting passed along, passed along, passed along, and unfortunately, they get to the point where, oh, they graduate, but they still don't know how to read that well, and it's, it's, it's really unfortunate. What Reader's Apprenticeship is, 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 it's all about metacognition. Metacognition is the awareness of, of one's thoughts. So when you read something, how does it relate to me? How can I process this and, and relate it to what's around me, my, myself? Um, and, and it's a way to identify and to have a deeper meaning within what, what you're reading. And we've sent, I believe, fifteen teachers at secondary level to, um, to get trained for Reader's Apprenticeship. And next year's professional development program will, will highly focus on, um, training teachers that went to the training, training other teachers to help, uh, other teachers, uh, infuse this into their classroom. So what, what it is, is there's four different domains of Reader's Apprenticeship. There's the personal dimension, the social dimension, the knowledge building dimension, and I believe it's a cognitive dimension, but again, in essence, when you talk about the social dimension, it's, it's creating an environment in the classroom where all the students can talk about where they're at in reading, they can talk about what they're reading, they can relate it to themselves, they can relate it to how it affects them as a person, but in all of these domains, you're really building a deeper understanding of what you're reading and how to read. And we have never done that at the secondary level. So the Reader's, Reader's Apprenticeship Program is, is something that is going to immediately impact our, our students and their reading and their processing of their reading. So, um, I'm not going to read the slides, um, verbatim, but I do want to say Wendy Sims and Jeanette Chris Nagel, who are both at Riverside, they put the slideshow together, and I, when I met with them and they showed me what they were doing with students, it is, it's exceptional because it, it really forces a student to, to think about what they're actually reading. You don't pass up a word if you don't know what it meant. You go back and figure out, what does it mean? What does it mean to me? What does it mean in the context that I'm reading it? And, and that is how you become a better reader, that's how you develop as a reader and that's how you can grow forward. And that's, this is something, like I said, it's never happened before and it's really exciting to see. So it's just another one of those supports and another, um, part of the system and the united front we're building as educators to make our students better here at Crestwood. So, um, you have the presentation, I'm not going to go through it all, but that is, in a nutshell, what, uh, the Reader's Apprenticeship Program is all about, and it's, it's an exciting place to be.
Okay, with that, I just want to say, um, I'm thrilled to see, uh, the things that are happening, what I read in your report about the rigor. Um, that makes me so much more confident, because this is what it's about, making sure that student success is what's happening in this district. Um, now, one more question. When are we going to see the math stuff come up like that? Is there something on that?
Well, actually, currently, right now, we are working at the elementary level of, with the, with the math program. So, one of the, one of the things that we have never done is, is to make sure that our, uh, elementary schools are on the same page with the math program.
Perfect.
And so, over the next five weeks, I'm going to be meeting at every elementary school and with, and, you know, it works with the team, not just me, but, um, working with the, the teachers to develop a cohesive math program at all grade levels at the elementary level, because it hasn't been done, we are, they're all in different places, and we can't go on like that, because a first grader at Kenlock and a first grader at Hillcrest and a first grader at Highview should all be learning the same math at first grade. It shouldn't be, we're doing our own thing here and we're doing our own thing there. So we are bringing this together now, and, um, yes, that is, that is happening, so.
Thank you.
And just, just so you know, Reader's Apprenticeship is multidisciplinary, it's not just for English Language Arts, but we're piloting it right now, and next year, we're going more full force. The research indicates that we have to start hitting these literacy components, because something that Joel mentioned, I want to reemphasize, it's called metacognition. It's giving students the ability to think about their thinking, and that goes into all other areas which increases rigor.
I'm, I'm telling you, I know you've been busy, just by all the good stuff that you're, um, bringing to us. It's impressive, and I just, I like, again, I can't say enough, I, I can't wait for the results. That's what I can't wait for. Um, any comments from the board or questions?
Great job.
Thank you, Joel.
Thank you so much, Joel.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sticking around.
Absolutely.
I thought it was just a dream.
The company.
No, he had two, he had two presentations.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to business report, Ms. Morgan?
Thank you. The first item I have is approval of requisitions. The attached list of requisitions on items that buildings or departments would like to purchase for the upcoming needs. Requisitions have gone through all the appropriate approval processes and have been approved by administration for purchase. In addition, there are funds available to make these purchases. Once requisitions are approved, they will be processed and purchase orders will be sent out. Madam Chair?
Ms. Janun?
I recommend the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisitions per attachment five A one.
Support.
We have a motion from Ms. Janun, support by Ms. Kaminsky, that the Crestwood Board of Education- We have a motion from Ms. Janun, supported by Ms. Kaminsky, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisition per attachment 5A1. Is there any, uh, comments or discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number two, approval of the Myatt Service Agreement. Crestwood School District would like to enter into a service agreement with Myatt College of Technology for the 2022-2023 school year. The agreement will allow Crestwood High School students to enroll in the vocational educlase, education classes that are not available through our Dearborn Heights consortium.
Madam Chair.
Uh, Mr. Baydun.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the 2022-2023 service agreement with Myatt College of Technology as outlined on attachment 5A2.
Support. Uh, we have a motion from Mr. Baydun, supported by Ms. Janun, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the 2022-2023 service agreement with Myatt College of Technology as outlined in atta, on attachment 5A2. Is there any discussion? Um, I, I had a question. So Henry Ford doesn't offer this stuff, right?
Myatt.
Mm-mm. None of that. Okay. All right. Um, any other questions? Go ahead.
I think this is a great thing. Um, this just opens up a world of education and learning for everybody involved. So, thank you.
Okay. With that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Number three, contract award recommendation for fire, for school fire alarm system RFB 22-001. Crestwood Administration is recommending that the fire alarm bid be awarded to Great Lakes Power and Lighting. The company is a reputable firm installing hundreds of school fire alarm systems within the state of Michigan. The project will upgrade the fire alarm systems of Riverside Middle School, Highview Elementary, Hillcrest Elementary, and Kenlock Elementary.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Kaminsky.
I recommend that the Board, Crestwood Board of Education, award the Great Lakes Power and Lighting the contract to replace the school fire alarm systems as specified in RFB 22-001. The total award recommendation for the project is 550, or I'm sorry, 567,000.
Support.
We have a motion for Ms. Kaminsky, supported by Mr., by Ms., uh, by Mr. Baydun, that the Crestwood Board of Education awards Great Lakes Power and Lighting contract to replace the school fire alarm systems as specified in RFB 22001. The total award recommendation for the project is 567, uh, thousand dollars. Um, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So are these, uh, upgrades for the fire alarms or do we find we were outdated or something wrong or?
They're all currently working. However, they're old systems. So within the next few years, they may break down. So we wanted to be proactive and replace them.
And then that also, within this, um, half a million, it includes lighting for which schools or across the district?
It, there is not lighting. It's just the fire alarm system.
It's just a fire alarm system for every school?
For the four schools remaining, yes. We did the high school, um, in 2020. And so the remaining four schools need to be completed.
And was that the lowest cost?
We had one bid. Um, a lot of the companies, the electrical companies in the area chose not to bid because of their workload and the, they didn't feel that they had the time or the manpower to support the needs that we needed.
And then do we get warranty with this or?
Yeah, it's the, the typical one-year warranty for the fire alarm system, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, I had asked about the breakdown.
He had not sent it to me this afternoon. I did ask him for it, but he did not give back to me yet.
Okay, um, I really would like to see that.
Madam Chair.
Um, the other question, um, did somebody walk with them to make sure that we, who, who did the walk?
They did not do a walkthrough. They did not walk through the buildings. They've been in our buildings before. Um, this company has during 2015, from my understanding and from everything that the research that I've had. But they did not do a walkthrough. They took the plans that National Time had provided with all the detail outlining every aspect of the plans. So they did not do the walkthrough.
Go ahead, Mr. Baydun.
How does the cost compare to the Crestwood?
When we did the Crestwood High School, it was 235,000 for one building for the high school. So when you're looking at four buildings, and I did talk to National Time compared with other areas that they've done, they're, it's very comparable. And actually, it's on the low side for the amount of buildings that they've done.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I just do still want to see the breakdown.
I will get that as soon as he sends it. I'm hoping he sends it tomorrow.
Okay, any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The final item that I have is the vending machine agreement. Crestwood High School would like to enter into a one-year agreement with El Robe LLC. This would allow the placement of vending machines within Crestwood High School. Administration would strategically place the vending machines so that it did not disrupt normal operations, but be available for after-school activities. A copy of the contract has been attached.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Baydun.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the one-year contract with El Obri LLC.
Support.
We have a, uh, motion for Mr. Baydun, supported by Ms. Kaminsky, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the one-year contract with Alarabi LLC. Um, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Janun.
So, the reason I, why I briefly asked you earlier is when the PTA here was looking at other options for fundraising, we were told we could rent the vending machine or have an outside party. We could purchase their own vending machine, but that we had to make sure that all of our snacks or anything that was in the vending machine was compliant with our smart snacks, unless it was in the teacher's lounge. But if they're placing them throughout the building where it's accessible to students throughout the day, we could run a risk of funding for. Correct. So there's two, there's two options. The first one is one of the vending machines will be in the teacher's lounge. The other one is going to be in, and Mr. Abdahadi, did he text me and he said it was going to be in the main hallway? Okay, so those, anything that's accessible to the students during the day or at any time, needs to be smart snack. Correct. It needs to follow, follow our wellness policy through, through food service. I think that we need to have that in our contract with the vending. I don't know how profitable that's going to be to him because those. They came to us, so. Right. That's what I'm saying. Is he aware that those items have to be smart snack approved? Yes, Mr. Abdahadi and I spoke with the young man and explained to him that he needed to follow our wellness policy and the guidelines for, through food service. And we were preparing a list of items that he could so that he was aware of what needed to be. In addition, it is possible that if for whatever reason, there are items that are not, um, smart approved in that vending machine, that we can shut them off during the day so that they're af, accessible after-school hours because we can sell items that are not smart after the school day. After 30 minutes after the end of the day. Yes. So that they would be available for athletic events or after-school activities in that aspect. Yes. So I just am concerned that we've, because I know that how, how stressed it, like with us and fundraising and, and having those two days where we're exempt, where we are able to fundraise or not, that don't, those items don't fall under those guidelines, that if, it had been said to me several times that if somebody from the state had walked in and saw those items that we could then be fined or lose our funding for that month. So I just don't want us to, to have any issues with that in the future. I feel like we probably would be safer to include some type of verbiage in our contract with him that states that he, I mean, unless the plan is to turn it off during the day all the ti, I mean, every single day, then what's, it almost, what's the point then? We can make sure that that's gets added. So, okay, so then can we, just, do we have to amend that? But I'm, but if the idea is to, for it to be a profit for him as well as us, I would think that he wouldn't want, I, I guess that's, I'm just, I'm just concerned that.
The profit is, is it 10% that the district would get?
He would pay us 10% of his profits, yes.
10%? So, does that limit our fundraising that is happening with the?
No. That, that would not do, deal with anything with our fundraising.
Okay, and so the hall, you said it's going into a hallway. I know that our halls are pretty narrow. Which hallway do you think it would go in?
He said, Mr. Abdahadi said the teacher's lounge and main hallway. So I'm not sure which one they consider the main hallway. So I'm sorry.
Well, the projects are five.
Up to five. We believe that there's only two. But I wanted to make sure if for some reason in the future that this was profitable for us and we continue, we could be able to grow it if we needed to. The contract could always be changed if it's only a one-year. Correct. Contract, so, okay.
So it said 10%, and that's 10% after all of, after him purchasing the items, his operating costs, all those things, right?
Correct, yes.
So I'm, I'm thinking that's very minuscule?
Yes.
Right? Um, how does that take away from what the school sells, even at lunch, even like water bottles or, you know, anything else? Would, I guess if you did an analysis, you know, are you getting more from selling it in the cafeteria versus, um, you know, getting it out of a vending machine that you're only getting maybe 10 cents on?
I don't think it's replacing though.
Hold on, let's, let's, let's let her finish.
No, I, I understand your question. Um, and until they're installed, it would be hard to tell what the, the impact on the cafeteria plan would be. Um, I believe that the biggest emphasis that they would have would actually be in the teacher's lounge and then also after school, when things are not being sold.
Mr. Baydun.
I'm sorry, a second. So what was our, what was our main benefit of what we are thinking we're getting out of this?
Well, it, it's actually, um, Mr. Abdahadi had looked at several different vending companies that he wanted to put to help streamline the process of getting things, especially for after-school, um, when students are here for athletic events, activities, and, and things that they don't have access to any snacks or water or beverages to drink.
Like for practices? Because usually on games and stuff, the building's closed anyway, right?
No, not necessarily.
My, 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 my experience has been it doesn't impact lunch sales. These vending machines are more for before-school, after-school events, types of deals. It's, when it comes to lunchtime, the kids go to the cafeteria. Plus, it's a closed lunch. So once they're in the cafeteria, they're in the cafeteria.
Mr. Baydun, go ahead.
So I, I see your point. Uh, so I don't think the intention is to replace. I think it's just accessibility. When the cafeteria is not open, um, a lot of times, like right now, I'm going to meet the coaches to open up the weight room, right? There's nothing in there. If there's a vending machine in there, if somebody has even like safety for like water or low sugar or something, just something fast, it's there. I, I'm assuming we're not in it to really make money, right? We're not going to make tons of money off this. We're just accessibility, right?
Correct, yes.
So then I guess my concern would be the location of it. If it's like you're saying, for, um, after-school and for athletics and all that, uh, which I understand, I would prob, I wouldn't put it in the main hall to have everybody running through. I would probably put it where it's accessible to the athletes.
The main is a pretty good spot at Crestwood because it's not far. It's all one hallway.
Well, I guess I'm thinking main hall, maybe I'm wrong. Like the office area? Isn't it the main hall?
It's just, it's literally right around the corner from the gym.
Yeah, it's, it's right there. It's actually a good spot.
Go ahead, Nja, and then Daniel.
My only concern here was this, just the funding in our, and any, us running into any issues. I think having it is a good idea. I think having accessible, I just, that was the only, my only concern was, and then it, we, if we don't have it open during the day, then we're kind of, the accessibility part, we're limiting that anyway. So I just wanted to make sure that we weren't affecting our funding and, and that, that was it.
Okay, Ms. Elzaya.
I was just going to say, I'm comfortable with, um, Mr. Abdahadi just figuring it out. And I'm sure if it becomes a problem where they place it, they can move it somewhere else.
Or add another one.
Or add another one somewhere else.
Okay, with that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. That's all I have for this evening.
Okay, moving on to Dr. Lazar Personnel Report.
Good evening. Our first action item this evening is the appointment of a community engagement organizer for Highview, Ms. Nasreen Saab. Ms. Saab has been a member of the Crestwood Food Service Team for 10 years. She has experience with managing inventory and coordinating student experiences and services provided through their breakfast and lunch periods. She's organized and a successful multitasker. Ms. Saab enjoys working in the school environment to support students and families.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Elzaya.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Nasreen Saab as a community engagement organizer for the 2021-2022 school year according to the AFSMI contract. Pay grade two clerical, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment 6A1.
We have a motion for Ms. Elzaya, supported by Ms. Janun, at the Crestwood Board of Education. Approve the hiring of Nasreen Saab as a community engagement organizer for the 2122 school year according to the AFSMI contract, pay grade two clerical, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment 6A. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, our second action item this evening is the appointment of a community engagement organizer for Hillcrest, Ms. Summer Yunus. Ms. Yunus has been a member of the Crestwood Food Service Department for 10 years. Ms. Yunus has managed, coordinated, and overseen the day-to-day food service operations at her school site. She has worked to assure compliance with district, state, and federal guidelines with regard to the delivery of food services. She has also trained in assisted staff and departmental expectations. She is looking forward to contributing to the overall efficiency and productivity of the school office.
Ms. Janun.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Summer Yunus as community, community engagement organizer for the 2122 school year according to the AFSMI contract. Pay grade two clerical, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment 6A2.
Support.
Uh, we have a motion from Ms. Janun, supported by Ms. Fawaz, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Summer Yunus as a community engagement organizer for the 2122 school year according to the AFSMI contract. Pay grade two clerical, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment 6A2. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Our third action item this evening is for the appointment of community engagement organizer for Kenlock, Ms. Fatma Talib. Ms. Talib has eight years of experience in the field of customer service and management. She has led and trained employees, handled multiple tasks, and is a self-starter. She also has experience as a translator interpreter assisting new families with the Arabic, with their Arabic English communication. She has strong communication and organizational skills and looks forward to supporting families in Crestwood.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Elzaya.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Fatma Talib as a community engagement organizer for the 2021-2022 school year according to the AFSMI contract, pay grade two clerical, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. Please see attachment 6A3.
Support.
We have a motion from Ms. Elzaya, supported by Mr. Baydun, at the Crestwood Board of Education. Approve the hiring of Fatma Talib as community engagement organizer for the 2122 school year according to the AFSMI contract, pay grade two clerical, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment 6A3. Any, uh, discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any, uh, opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, our fourth, uh, action item this evening is the appointment of a community engagement organizer for Riverside Middle School, Ms. Halah Hamud. Ms. Hamud has worked as a substitute secretary for the Crestwood School District for the past seven years and is familiar with the operations of her school offices. She has helped parents and educators communicate and complete tasks to support students. She has also worked as a substitute paraprofessional supporting students in the classroom. She believes in communicating in a way that is respectful, but also inviting to make parents feel welcome in the school.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Janun.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Halah Hamud as a community engagement organizer for the 2122 school year according to the AFSMI contracts, pay grade two clerical, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment 6A4.
Support.
We have a motion for Ms. Kaminsky, I'm sorry, by Ms. Janun, supported by Ms. Kaminsky, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Halah Hamud as a community engagement organizer for the 2122 school year according to the AFSMI contract. Pay grade two clerical, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment 6A4. Is there any discussion? What I want to say is that you've got some great candidates here. Um, I'm familiar with some of the names and I've seen them through the buildings and, um, I've seen their loyalty to the district. So that, um, kudos to you guys on that. Um, with that, uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Our fifth appointment, uh, uh, action item this evening is the appointment of a school social worker for Hillcrest, Ms. Wanda Massey. Ms. Massey holds a Master of Social Work from Eastern Michigan University, and a Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Education from the University of Michigan Dearborn. She has nine years of experience in the field of education as both a teacher and a social worker. She has been a part of the MTSS process, facilitated social skills groups, coordinated the delivery of wraparound educational and mental health services, and delivered professional development related to a wide range of special education and socially emotional-related topics. Ms. Massey is very excited to serve the Crestwood School District and its community of students and families.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Baydun.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Wanda Massey as a so- school social worker for the twenty-one-twenty-two school year according to the CFT contract MA step five. Effective pending acceptable criminal background check, and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment six A five.
Support. We have a motion from Mr. Baydun, support by Ms. Janoon, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Wanda Massey as a school social worker for the twenty-one-twenty-two school year according to the CFT contract MA step five. Effective pending acceptable criminal background check, and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment six A five. Uh, is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And our last action item this evening is the appointment of a dean of students for Riverside Middle School, Mr. Khalil Daklala. Mr. Daklala has a bachelor in business from Lawrence Technological University. He has thirty-two years of experience working in a school setting with grades kindergarten through high school. He served as both a middle school and high school student services liaison. Mr. Daklala was also involved in the community service program at the high school, and assisted in supervising extracurricular activities. In addition to his school experience, he is a police reserve sergeant in charge of training new reserve officers, and a supervisor in the Dearborn Parks and Recreation Department. Mr. Daklala's guiding principle is to base his relationship with students on mutual respect.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Janoon.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Khalil Daklala as dean of students for the twenty-one-twenty-two school year according to the dean of students contract. Effective pending acceptable criminal background check, and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment six A six.
Support. Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Janoon, support by Ms. Fawaz, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Khalil Daklala as a dean of students for the twenty-one-twenty-two school year according to the dean of students contract. Effective pending acceptable criminal background check, and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment six A six. Is there any discussion? I don't know how you pulled this off.
Is this, this is the Daklala that I remember when I was in school? I don't, this is it?
This is exciting.
Same one?
Yeah, this is exciting.
Congratulations to all of us, and our kids, because now I think Riverside was going in the right direction, but now I know it will be there. I'm serious, so.
Yeah, no, this, this is great news. I, I gotta be, if anybody can do it, Khalil Daklala can do it.
So when does he start, tomorrow? Really?
Okay, okay. With that being said, um, uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I can't wait to hear the, the effects of this, but this is great.
Comes administration.
Yes.
Why is it administration?
So how many hours will he be working?
It's in the contract that was submitted, it's, it's to fit his retirement.
Okay.
Yeah, he can only work a certain number of hours.
No, tell him to put, put his retirement on the paper.
No, we can't pay him that much.
I know. Okay, with that, um, superintendent's uh report.
All right, just some informational items this evening, Madam President. So first off, National Honor Society, NA double S P scholarship semifinalist Nora Kurachi. Uh, she, um, it's a very, very prestigious scholarship, um, and she's a semifinalist, so, um, she, she should, it's, I don't remember the amount, but it's a significant amount of money for, for her to for college. Also want to give congratulations to Amara Abdahak, who was elected as governor for the Michigan District of Key Club International. Um, also, Zainab Zaydan was elected the lieutenant governor of District twelve for Key Club. Um, Crestwood High School Athletic Highlights Athlete Honors Hala Alouli and Yasmeen Slim, as well as Boys Basketball twenty-twenty-two Academic All-State in Division One. Uh, Charger Robotics won the Engineering Inspiration Award, so they're, they're, they're going forward there. Wayne County Health Department will be having a vaccine clinic here at Riverside, May twenty-seventh from four to six P M, so we're still doing that stuff.
Which, is this for a booster, or?
I, I think it's the second booster.
You can get anything.
Yeah.
So this is the second booster, really?
Second booster, or like, then?
You have to be fifty or older.
Okay.
So bring your A A R P card, all right.
It's underlying health condition. Sorry, I want to get that all up there.
Thank you.
Before somebody calls me.
Uh, Crestwood High School important under the year dates, uh, I just keep reiterating these, because I want to make sure everybody's aware of May fourteenth, NHS, senior prom, May twentieth. Finals are May twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth for seniors, graduation rehearsal June second, honors night June second, graduation June fourth, and then graduation rain date June sixth, hopefully we don't have to do that. April fourteenth is the next parent meeting for cyberbullying. May twelfth, they're gonna be doing a presentation on parenting and adolescent, setting limits and boundaries with your child. Um, and just so everyone's aware, if you go to the Crestwood YouTube channel, thank you David Green and your team, all those presentations are on the Crestwood YouTube channel, so they're available. And then final commentary, I just want to reiterate, uh, what Mr. Paul stated, as well as what the team has presented. Uh, we're moving forward, uh, we have a lot going on, um, and we've been having some really good conversations with teachers, talking about this spring, the summer, and the fall. So we're, we're preparing, and we're getting ready to develop our professional development series for our teachers over the summer, as well as for the full year, to take our district to the next level. That's my commentary, Madam President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, any board comments?
So.
Mr. Baydun.
One thing I want to say is, uh, I love seeing the community being passionate, they should come out to every meeting, uh, voice their concerns, voice their thoughts. Uh, great turnout tonight, so thank you for that. Also, uh, congratulations for those observing Ramadan, and also Lent. Um, you know, it's very strong community, we have a big voice in the community that, you know, diversified community, that everybody's observing something this month, so, uh, congrats, uh, for that. Also, March is reading month, just passed. I want to say, I, I went to multiple schools, and I can't tell you, every time I went to the school, an elementary school, I seen high schoolers there. They were either leaving when I was getting there, or getting there when I left. They were given, you know, it makes the kids excited. So I know my son was excited, because he had a couple, uh, football players reading to him, and he was just asking a lot of questions, he came home, and we didn't hear the end of it. So, I mean, thank you to all the seniors, and, you know, juniors, and any high schooler that went out and read to the elementary schools. Um, also, congrats to Nazir Baydun and Reena Mazhar. They were, um, selected to be admitted into Harvard. So I know that's a really big, uh, achievement. Congratulations to them and their families. Um, at the end of the day, it's all about the students and their growth, whether it's through academics, facilities, athletics, it doesn't matter, it's all about the kids. And, uh, those two really, I, I seen a lot of, uh, advertisements, and ads, and social media posts with their names on it, so I just wanted to go out and congratulate them myself. That's it.
I'm not gonna repeat everything he said, so I echo and support all of it.
Um, same, honestly, I know it's getting late, but we have a lot to be proud of, and I, and we're, we're definitely going in the right direction. CAB PTA did have, and Mr. Faber is not here any longer, but we had a couple of different events where we brought students. We were trying to bring the kids together for something that was a little more calm, where they could bring out their artistic side, and, um, you know, he did a painting with the twist, without the twist, but he, um, they seemed to enjoy it, and, you know, it's like we've been raising this money all year, and we just wanted to do something for the kids, and, you know, Ms. Fawaz was there, and we had a few other parents, parent volunteers, and NHS came out, you know, they helped out tremendously, because there was a lot to do. It was our first one, and hopefully it's something that they can do yearly, now that they don't have to purchase a lot of supplies, so, um, thank you to the students, thank you to the parents that helped, and it was, it was fun. And Mr. Faber?
I want to echo what, um, Haftan, and, uh, I'm really proud of the way the district's moving, and all the strides we're making, and, um, March was reading month, and I went to all the elementary schools, and I just want to give a special shout-out to my new little friend Blake. He, uh, he touched my heart in a way that hasn't happened in a long time. All the kids were amazing, and, uh, it was very special, and I was honored to be there, so, thank you.
Um, no, I'm not gonna go through all of that, but I, I do want to say, my favorite part of the meeting today was Mr. Ryan Paul.
Uh-huh.
And I just wanted to, I didn't get a chance to while he was here, uh, I just wanted to give a special thank you to him. Takes a special kind of human to come in and recognize other people when they've been recognized, so, kudos to him, he's doing a great job over there.
Okay, I just want to say, uh, to Mr. and Mrs. Baydun, Nazir's parents, you've done an awesome job. I've seen how involved they've been throughout, I've seen all the support that they have given to Nazir, and the same goes for Reena Mazhar. Um, the parents have always been there, and when you see that the partnership is there between parents and school, you're gonna see these kinds of results. We're very proud, I was very proud to see all the, um, posts, uh, knowing that this is what Crestwood is producing, and all the other, um, scholarship awardees. This is, this is what we strive for, and this is what our passion is, to see this, and we hope to see much more of that. Um, and the other thing I want to say is, kudos, I think this is the first time that I've seen this many board members go into the buildings to read to students, um, and I know that that was a proud moment, I know the administrators were there, but to see the involvement from the board members, it was very, very impressive to me. And with that being said, Ramadan Kareem to everybody, and Lent, uh, I hope everybody has a good, healthy Lent season. Um, any, uh, other comments? With that, motion to adjourn, Ms. Kaminski? We have a motion for Ms. Kaminski. Supported by Mr. Baydun, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, we're adjourning at nine oh two. Okay, thank you, and good night, everyone.